All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Cagnetta and this is a meeting of the South Kingston Rhode Island Zoning Board of Review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, William Rosen, Arlene Hicks, Jeff Ilya, and alternate William McDonald. Also present are Amy Goine, South Kingston Special Legal Counsel, Jamie Gorman, South Kingston Building and Zoning Official, and Jessica Spence, our Administrative Support. The Board is made up of eight people with five regular voting members. A minimum of four members must be present to vote. In the event of a regular member being absent or recused, an alternate will step in. No more than five voting members are entitled to vote, rather, and at least three are needed to vote in favor of a request. Tonight, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Rosen, Ms. Hicks, Mr. Ilya, and Mr. McDonald. No, I'm sorry. Tonight, be voting, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Rosen, Ms. Hicks, Mr. Ilya, and Mr. McDonald. Right? No, not Mr. McDonald. And me. I'm afraid of doing it one more time. All right. Applicants are here either for a dimensional or use variance or a special use permit. The Board is made of a quasi-judicial body created in the South Kingston ordinance pursuant of state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless you get carried away or it's deemed not relevant. So, in the interest of time, please be brief and on point. We do our best not to argue and to keep things civil. We try to hear the last petition by 10 o'clock. After we introduce your petition, please step up to the microphone. Adjusting the microphone is necessary to get it close to your face. Clearly state your name and spell it for the record. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth. After that, you can present your petition with any witnesses to testify in support of the application. The Board will then ask you or your witnesses question. Questions? And I'll back up for a second. Make sure this red light is on when you're up there. There's a little body on the device down there that you just kind of press on and the red light will come on. If everybody's mic is on, then we're going to get feedback, so just turn off the mic when you're done speaking. After the petitioners presented their testimony, anyone with questions in support of or opposition to, the petition can step forward to the microphone. You will identify yourself, be sworn in, and present your testimony with follow-up questions from the Board. Please do not direct any questions or comments to the petitioner or any other witnesses. The Board will direct questions to the petitioner or the witnesses after the comment period. After the hearing, all of the testimony, Board members will discuss it and the application and the evidence presented. So, Board members will ask a lot of questions and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules to follow per our South Kingston ordinance, so you must give us testimony to support certain facts to allow us to request, to approve the request. So, tonight, we have dimensional variances and a special use permit on the agenda. For a dimensional variance, you must present evidence that your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure but is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area; that your hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part; that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area; and that your hardship by the denial of the variance will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. That means that the relief sought is minimal to reasonably enjoy the permitted use of your property. And for a special use permit, you must present evidence that the request is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. So, somewhere in our zoning ordinance, it has to say that what you're asking for can be authorized or we do not have the power to grant it. The request meets all the criteria in the zoning ordinance that authorizes such special use and that the request will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area, nor will it impair the purpose or the intent of the zoning ordinance. And just so you know, all of the information that we do receive with the packets and any correspondences for the application are entered into the record, right? So, anything that has gone through the office, if it was verified through email or if he did show up at the office, all of it is submitted as part of the record. So, tonight, there are six things on the agenda. We're going to do five and six first only because they're asking for extensions on their application. So, the first one is for the Henry Cabrera, which is 3812 Commodore Oliver Hazard Perry Highway in South Kingston. They're appealing the zoning board official's judgment, is, not judgment, but basically the violation that was issued by the zoning official. Is there anyone here for that tonight? So, Lavender Farms. So, they sent us a correspondence on the 27th that they, or please accept my apology for not being able to appear in person due to a scheduling conflict. So, they're asking for a continue to the appeal for October 15th, 2025, and that is a meeting date, the October 15th? So, does anybody want to have any comments about that? Any concerns about extending it?
No.
Okay. So, someone want to make a motion for the October 15th, 2025 meeting to continue at two?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Hicks, is there any other discussion?
I move that we...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I move that we grant their request to continue this item for the October 15th meeting.
Sounds good. Is there any other? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. The next one is the petition for Milton Rogers. They're appealing the decision of the zoning enforcement officer to their property on Columbia Street. Is there anyone here for that petition? No? Okay. On behalf of the applicant, please accept this correspondence as a request to continue the matter referenced above from the August 27th zoning board meeting to the September 17th, which is our next scheduled meeting, right? So, September 17th. So, someone like to make a motion for... Mr. Ilya?
I'd like to make a motion that we move the petition of Milton Rogers of 70 Foster Shelton Road, South Kingston, to our September 27th meeting.
Okay.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth? Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Nope? Okay, so that's continued. So, next, we're going to hear the petition of Grace Donofrio from 60 Wildridge Road in Ridgefield, Connecticut, 06877. The applicant is seeking a one-year extension of the special use permit under the zoning ordinance, Section 901A, of one-year time limit and one-year extensions. The applicant seeks a one-year extension to a previously approved special use permit to construct a 20-foot by 10-foot addition to the existing seasonal cottage. Lot size is 7.67 acres. A special use permit was required per the zoning ordinance, Section 203, the special use permit for addition, enlargement, and expansion or intensification, Section 608, our coastal community overlay district, and 7907, Section 907 of our standards of relief. The special use permit has a two-year expiration date from the original recorded date of September 29th, 2023, and it's in the South Kingston Land Evidence Book 1866, pages 398 and 399. The owner of the cottage is Grace Donofrio on property owned by Village at Potter's Pond LLC, South Kingston, Assessors Map 87-3, lots 45, lot 5-45, and is zoned CW. Is anyone here tonight? No? Okay. So, what's our option? To extend it or...
Typically, Mr. Chairman, the first one-year extension, they submitted a correspondence requesting that. Typically, they don't have to appear, it's just a letter requesting that.
Okay. Okay. So, it's something we do vote on and discuss and so forth? Okay? So, is there anything in particular on the letter that we should know in terms of what the request was made for? Like, why would they like more time?
It doesn't stay on the application, they're just requesting, Ms. Donofrio is just requesting the one-year extension. It wasn't articulated on the application, though.
Okay. So, and we didn't hear anything from the owners as having an issue with them extending it as well? Okay?
Mr. Cagnetta, I had spoken with Ms. Donofrio and she was having issues getting contractors. That was the main thing.
Sure. I can respect that. Okay. Does anyone have any comments about this? Any discussion at all? Any concerns? I mean, it seems reasonable. There's no opposition to it, so...
And we previously approved it.
We previously approved it, correct? Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve the extension for Grace Donofrio for their special use permit to expand their, for an addition that we approved back in September 29th, 2023. They're looking for a one-year extension? Which would sunset this date?
September 29th, 2026.
It will be September 29th, 2026, that, this expiration date of the permit. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the special use permit. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ilya. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Ilya?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta? Aye. Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have the petition of Martha McManamy. Revocable trust in 315 Only Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02906, where a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance is follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a 572 square foot addition to the existing dwelling. The addition will be 24.4 feet from the side property line. The required yard setback is 40 feet, therefore a relief of 15.6 feet is requested. Lot size is 5.88 acres. The dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 401, scheduled dimension of regulations, and Section 907, our standards of relief. The owner of the property is Martha B. McManamy, revocable trust for premises located at 208 Ledge Road, South Kingston, Assessors Map 42-3, lot 6, and is zoned R80. Good evening. Oh, is it not on? Look at us. Should fire a roadie. Nah, it goes into the, yeah.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, good evening. And you are?
My name is Attorney James Kupa, K-U-P-A. I'm an attorney practicing in the state of Rhode Island. I've been practicing the law for 33 years. My office is located at 6500 Post Road in North Kingston. I practice in every court in the state of Rhode Island, including the federal jurisdiction, and I've practiced before many town planning boards and zoning boards over the 33 years I've been an attorney. My client is the Martha B. McManamy, say that five times fast, trust.
I was having a hard time with two.
Yeah. And M. and John McManamy are the trustees and own the property located at 208 Ledge Road. M. and John, through the trust, purchase this property as a second home, as many Rhode Islanders do, and this was a family cottage owned by the McManamys family for many, many years. And M.'s family has very strong roots in South Kingston community. My clients, as you can see, are absent today. They're not here because they thought the meeting was going to take place last Wednesday.
Typically, yeah.
So, they booked their trip to Maine.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, on the 27th, so they're in the northern reaches and it was one of these, should we come back, drive all the way back and drive all the way back? So, we figured that JP, John, and I could, John Walsh and I could figure this out for them. So, anyway, my clients would like to have me read a statement in their absence, if that's fine with the Board.
Please.
And I'll start off here with, "I recently purchased my sibling's share in this family cottage. My husband and I are hoping to be able to visit here for many years to come. We are both recently retired, but we aren't getting any younger. The cottage currently has only one small sleeping area up a spiral staircase. Not only does the stair and headspace not meet current codes, my sister slipped and fell in the stairs during the night on her last visit. This gives us pause for our future, especially since I fell down another stairs and broke my shoulder and arm last year. The upstairs space has no door and no actual closet, so if we had another couple come visit and we slept on the living room couch, there'd be no privacy for either couple. We intend to convert the upstairs space to a study for our son who lives in Providence and works remotely. He occasionally comes down with his girlfriend for a few days. We have engaged a terrific architect, John Walsh, who understands completely the style of the New England cottage vernacular and the simplicity of the current structure. He has designed in addition to include a bedroom, bath, and sitting room at grade, which we can use as we age. His design fits perfectly with the small size and simplicity of the rest of the cottage. Shortly after we purchased the share of the cottage from my sister Holly, who is the butter on that side, she let us know that the lot line is much closer to the house than we knew. In fact, a portion of our driveway is over the line. At that time, we tried to purchase the strip of land or an easement allowing us to use the full driveway and a parking area beside the house, but we were not able to finalize such an agreement. As a result, we need to seek a variance for a setback allowance. As I understand, the current house sits back some 14 feet from the lot line. The addition will be at its closest 24 feet from the lot line. Stepping away from the lot line as you move towards the garage, there is an enormous tree that our parents put in years ago, which will shield most of the extension from the view from the neighboring property." That's the McManamy statement. I'd like to give a bit of an overview of the project, if I may.
Excuse me, could we enter that as applicant's Exhibit 1?
Absolutely, thank you. We have a five-acre lot. This property's 5.88 acres, and it's oddly configured with a home being built in the 1940s and sited, obviously, prior to zoning, and it sits rather close to the Westley property line. And as many families did back in the day, they built homes on mom and dad's large property and didn't have a second thought. And eventually, those homes are subdivided off into separate lots, leaving an odd placement of this home. It's very close to the property line, which with all that acreage, you think it wouldn't be. M. and John are proposing to construct a main floor bedroom, bathroom, and sitting area depicted in the architectural plans provided in the site plan. The square footage for this additional space will be 572 square feet. The addition has been pushed back as far as it can go off the side yard property line or 24.4 feet, which allows for the proper flow within this home, which JP Walsh will testify to. The South Kingston zoning ordinance for this zone requires 40 feet off the side yard. My clients are asking for a 15.6-foot variance to allow them to construct this much-needed space. This home is a one-bedroom home and will remain a one-bedroom home. I have here tonight with me, John, will you come up? Be sworn in?
Yep.
Do you want to swear me in?
Yeah, please, just state and spell your name.
Okay, my name is John Patrick Walsh, W-A-L-S-H. I'm a registered architect in Rhode Island and Connecticut. My offices are at 9 Canal Street in Westley, and I've been in practice about 30 years now.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Excellent. So, go ahead.
Okay.
No, go ahead, you can get into it and explain the...
Right. If you wouldn't mind zooming in on this, this is a site plan, and I just want to kind of walk you folks through it. If you could rotate it 180 degrees, that'd be good. Sorry, it's going to mess up your zoom. That's fine, if you can zoom in right there, that's good. Okay, so, this is, the existing dwelling is the one with the hatch lines around it, okay? And you can see the driveway coming up on the left-hand side, and it does cross over into M.'s sister's property by about five feet, right there. We have about 14.8 feet from the back corner of the existing cottage to the existing property line. So, what we did when we were designing this is to the upper side of the house, the existing house, if you zoom in on that photograph, you'll see it very well. Okay, right there where you see the house and you see that triangular type of deck, right behind that deck, there's a big, that's ledge, that white, that's ledge popping up out of the ground. So, what we did was we were trying to put an addition off of that side of the house to come down off the other side of the house puts us into the proximity of the existing septic system, okay? To go off the front side of the house, there's even more ledge and it's higher. So, what we did was we looked at that and what I came up with for a concept was I said, "Take that back upper right-hand corner of the house and hold that line parallel with the setback line and then build forward of that." So, in essence, we're not going any closer than the upper right corner of the existing house to the existing property line. So, I was trying to push it away as far as I could, but not get too much into that ledge because I got to get foundation in the ground, I don't want to get into blasting, you know, if we have to chip a little ledge out, that's one thing, but, you know, to start blasting to put foundation and stuff in, you know, that creates all sorts of issues, especially on this cottage since it's 1940s and the entire foundation is stone, true stone. So, you know, you start blasting that close on the ledge, the stones sitting on the ledge, we all know what happens then, you know, things start cracking. So, I was trying to be very, very aware and working with them and knowing the family history of this property to try to get what they needed into a space that would not impact the initial or the original historic cottage, which is, by the way, absolutely gorgeous. If they ever have an open house, and you can go there and check this out, it is a true 1940s cottage. I'd move in there in a heartbeat, okay? So, the addition was to stay very simple and in keeping with that cottage vernacular. The addition, as Attorney Jim mentioned, is, you know, less than 600 square feet, so it's basically less than any of your 24-by-24-foot garages, okay? And it's one-story, and I pulled the roof, the roof isn't as high as the existing roof, it's lower. So, we're trying to be very mindful of all this and encroach as little as possible into that setback and to stay, kind of keep that buffer. The other thing I want to talk about just for a second is the existing cottage does have, M. mentioned it in her letter, it has a, I'm going to call it a sleeping loft or what they've been using as a sleeping loft, and then I guess 1940s, it probably worked really well. I guess it's maybe back in 1940, they didn't even have indoor plumbing, I don't know. But, the loft is very dangerous. If you flip up a couple, you see some photographs, and they're not going to come out really well on this, but if you zoom into like, yeah, that one right on the left there, that one, that's the stairway down, and I would call this your worst nightmare. And I think Jamie, I did meet with Jamie on this and we talked about it before we went too far into the design, and I explained that where those winders come together, there isn't any tread. It's a knife edge. So, if you're going down that stair and your foot slips, you're going. I mean, you're just going to fall around that thing and get seriously injured. The other problem is, it's hard to see on the photo to the right, but a stairway has to have 6'8" headroom. That stairway has not got 6'8" headroom. So, as you're starting down the stairs and you're turning into this winder, you're also being forced to lean in and duck down, which, oh my goodness, that just compounds a problem. The upstairs loft area did have a little teeny closet, which I believe M. and John have already converted over into a bookcase, and it has no egress windows. There is no bathroom up on that level. So, in the middle of the night, as you're getting older, and we all know as we get older, we have to use the bathroom sometimes in the middle of the night, you're negotiating this stairway, it's a recipe for disaster. So, the idea is to turn this into a loft study area, which it would work fine for something like that, and the addition now will have a fully on-level, you can see it right there on the, oop, that's the existing, keep going. It'll be the next sheet. There it is. You can see right there going off to the right, that angled piece of the building is the building that's following the setback line. So, there's a sitting area that looks out to ledge that allows people to come out from that area onto the ledge. The existing cottage doesn't really get touched much at all. The deck stays the way it is, so the views and stuff are kept. And then what we did was we put a new single bedroom on that floor with a master bath and a small walk-in closet. So, for people who are planning to, you know, use this as they're aging, this is much safer and much more feasible than what exists there now. So, I guess, you know, if we had to talk about what the hardships are, the ledge would be one. The existing septic eliminates the ability to go to the opposite side. The fact that this is a home that has been purchased by people that are now retired and they still want to use it, it's a family home, the historic character of the home, you know, and just basically trying to do this in such a manner that we stay as far off that property line as we can, but retain the views and everything that the existing cottage has now.
Right, and you've kept it in keeping also, JP, with the surrounding areas, the design and the...
Yep. If you continue on to the next sheet. Okay. Okay, that upper view is probably the best view to look at, if you can zoom in on that. Okay, that's what it looks like. The original cottage is to the left-hand side, and the reason... So, you're looking at that if you're saying, "Oh, my goodness, that addition looks really huge going off to the right." It's not. The reason it looks huge is because it's falling away from you. So, in perspective, it's going to look longer because it's dropping back and away, okay? But it's not. It's not a huge addition. Like I say, it's under 600 square feet. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So, board members, any questions for this witness? Certainly explained their intent and why? So, any...
Is this going to be built on a slab, or is it going to be a wall?
There will be a slab and a partial crawl space below it. We will be pinning the foundation probably to portions of the ledge. I'm not sure how far... As you move towards the back property line, the ledge does go down, so I'm going to try to follow that ledge. We haven't gone out there and excavated and done any of that yet, so... And I've done homes before where we pin the foundation to the ledge. I mean, there's no better footing than a ledge, it's been here for a couple million years, it won't be going anywhere. And I think... You think it'll carry the load capacity?
Yeah. I figure okay. So, and you're saying to that southwestern part where the septic is, is sort of that...
It's a bowl.
Bowl, right. And that... It wasn't really feasible to go in that direction for you guys?
No.
Into that?
No. What it required, because of the requirements of DEM rule... Yeah, just DEM setback rules, we couldn't have done it. We have to stay 10, 15 feet away from the septic system, and the septic system isn't that far out over there now. Plus, it drops way down, so...
So, you're saying it's pretty much the unique? It's a pretty much a unique property in the sense that there is all that ledge there, sort of restricting a bit where you can go.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're not... You probably will not be requiring an enormous amount of concrete for this foundation, correct?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Oh, and I am aware that there's a question about concrete trucks and bringing equipment up here, and I'll just jump the gun a little bit and address that. We got 14.8 feet between the back corner of the house and the property line. That's more than enough for a concrete truck to get through, okay? The other thing is, if we had to, we can pump the concrete, so we don't have to bring the concrete truck all the way up. I know that the concrete truck, the driveway goes over, you know, the property line, and I defer to the owners and Holly, the sister, on how they want to work with that, whether or not we say, "Okay, we're going to repair the driveway if there's anything damaged done to it. It will be made at least as good as it is now or better," or whether we just say, "Okay, where we got that five foot that we start to open up, we just do another area to the south side of that driveway where we put in crushed stone or whatever we got to do so that the truck is not going over the driveway on the other property." I think that's easy enough to work out.
Well, we can certainly... We might have you back up. We'll read in some of the submittals.
Yeah, jump the gun.
And no, no, you're fine. It's okay. I just don't want to go ahead of that too far, but...
Yeah.
Is there anything you want to add in terms of the design and placement and so forth?
No, just that we're trying to keep it, you know, keep it small, keep it in character, and, you know, not change the existing cottage. I mean, trying to retain that existing cottage. And again, you know, before we made the decision on pushing forward, even on the design as it is now, I did meet with Jamie, and we did sit down, and we went through the photos, and we talked about that bedroom, and I explained what we were doing. So, we had this kind of understanding of where we were going with this, that this still would be a one-bedroom house.
Okay. Mr. Rosen, do you have a question?
Excuse me. The original house, the foundation, what's that made of?
Stone. It's actually a stone. It's a... Yeah, it's an old... There... It's kind of a mixed match. There's certain areas that have a little bit of concrete and then stone built up, but then there are a lot of areas that are just stone laid on top of the ledge or stone on top of concrete that steps down over the ledge.
And the new addition that you're adding on, you're planning to put a cement foundation?
It'll be concrete, yeah.
Why?
Why?
Why don't you just continue with stone?
Because we have to do hole-down anchors and stuff like that per the new codes, per our codes today that weren't there in the 1940s, and I need to be able to anchor the building. Now, I may say to the clients, "Why don't we face the foundation with stone to..." You know, I haven't gotten that far yet, because that's really detailed stuff, but I may want to face... They may want to face the foundation of the new cottage so that it matches the look of the stone of the old.
Okay.
Okay.
And what about brick? Could you make the foundation of brick?
No.
Cement brick, I mean.
Yeah. I could make a foundation of concrete blocks, but I got to... Then I got to fill the concrete and pin it into the ledge anyway.
Oh, I see.
So...
Okay.
So, either way, we're going to get into concrete. If I try to do it with brick, and we stack brick and make it like eight or 10 inches wide to carry the foundation wall, then the problem is, once I put a hole down into it, if we get a wind, brick's just going to come apart. It's not going to control in that uplift condition and wind condition. So, the codes are driving me a little bit with this.
Uh-huh. And you can't put just iron rods in there or something?
No.
No? Okay. I know nothing about this, so I'm just gaining information here.
Good question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Question on the septic system. It's rated for how many bedrooms?
One.
And you mentioned that the cottage was built in 1940, which would imply a cesspool. What do we have there now, a septic or a cesspool?
No, you have a... It was an updated... I can't remember the year it was updated, but it is a fully updated and approved OWTS system by Rhode Island DEM for a one-bedroom system.
Okay.
And I believe we included that within the application, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a fully conform system, and again, that's why I met with Jamie, because we only have a one-bedroom system, so we wanted to make sure that we're still adhering to DEM guidelines.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Ilya.
I was actually walked the property today, so I did see the septic system, which is above ground. Quick question, I know the homeowner is not here, but you seem like you're very familiar with the property. To the left of the property line, it was... The property was maintained and groomed. Do you know who maintains and grooms that on a regular basis? Is it the homeowner?
You mean to the left of the driveway?
Yes.
I believe it's the homeowner, but I would... M.'s sister is here this evening, Holly. She could probably answer that question better than I.
And I believe it might be a parking area that M. and her husband, John, use and visitors use when they come, which was an agreement between them.
So, they maintain that property presently, correct?
I believe they do.
Think they do.
And we'll want to address that in one fell swoop, so we'll...
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions, board members? No? Anything else you want to add? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thanks, folks.
Mr. Kubat, is there anyone else you'd like to bring up?
That's all. That's all we have. Thank you.
So, I'll read in the couple of letters that were sent in to us, so you can sit on it. So, we have the four correspondences at this point? Jamie, I believe. There are two of them here from adjoining... Or two properties that are adjacent to it. There's one from 210 Ledge Road and the other one from 292 Middle Bridge Road, which I might ask a question if there's access from Middle Bridge. I know the property goes all the way down there, but... So, these two are adjacent. They're the same letter signed by two different folks, Mr. Strickler from 210 Ledge Road and Mr. Piaz? Is it Plez? I'm not sure which one. Of 292 Middle Bridge Road. So, the letter states that they both support the plans of the addition to be aesthetically pleasing and in keeping with the historic character, massing in style. They understand that the addition is further away from the lot line than the existing home, and therefore, a relief is very reasonable. So, they say the renovation will meet the needs of the homeowners. So, these two are in... They approve of it. There is one... These folks are from 150 Ledge Road, Holly Smith and Battersea LLC, which is that... Is that the same property as the other letter? So, these two are from the same property owner?
The Battersea LLC, I believe, is the adjacent property.
Is that the same from the attorney's?
Holly Smith.
Okay.
Yes.
So, Holly Smith and the Corrente and Flanders is the same... Okay, so these... So, we basically have three people that are adjacent that have submitted. These folks are in opposition of it. Their concerns are with a paved driveway that swings onto their land, which you had mentioned before. So, the driveway is about nine feet wide, and they're concerned about trucks going in and out, which they're saying that they're not going to allow them going across their land. And this was the letter received on the 22nd, and then today, the 27th, we received a three-page letter with four exhibits from the attorney's office representing Holly Smith and Battersea, which were requesting that it's... This letter seeks to appeal to both the zoning board and the trust reasonable sensibilities in creating safeguards and conditions in consideration of Ms. Holly's property interest. They wanted this... So, primarily, their concerns are with the driveway that clearly, both on sight, we saw that there were some marks in the ground, and then you can see by some of the images that were submitted that clearly, the driveway does go over the property line. And I also, when I was out there, I did see that the ledge sort of prevents you from staying on the driveway alone. So, I guess my question would be to Ms. Goines, is what is, you know, in situations like this, where there is a private disagreement in terms of property lines and in terms of use and so forth, how much does that play into our decision of dimensional variance?
My advice is that the board shouldn't be considering civil issues, issues of access, issues of potential adverse possession. Not that it's not relevant, but the suggestion from the objector's attorney that we make an agreement between the applicant and the objector, a condition of approval, that's not going to work for the board to condition its approval on a civil agreement between the parties, and the town ends up being the enforcement party in arm for a private agreement. That doesn't end well. We've been through that before. So, I think the board can consider how the, you know, application, the proposed addition, will affect the neighboring parcel, but to the extent the applicant... The objector is asking that we condition any approval on an agreement, I would advise against that.
Is it our assumption that there is easy access to the property? Like, obviously, we cannot build on a lot that's landlocked, right? Like, you can't... That you can't access. So, is there... Is this that? Are we saying that there's no access to the property?
The town... The zoning board can't grant property rights that the applicant doesn't already possess, and really, only the Superior Court can determine property rights to the extent that there is a disagreement over access, over boundaries. And I'm not sure that this disagreement does rise to quite that level, but ultimately, they're civil issues that I don't think the board can make a fundamental part of its decision. I think you need to look at whether the application meets the standards, leave it to the applicant and the adjacent property owner to work out any issues. If they don't work out those issues, the applicants may not be able to move forward anyway.
And would you say that our potential opposition to it could be based on any safety concerns or anything like it? It could be based on that. If we thought that there was... If egress onto or off the property were an issue for the type of construction they're suggesting, then perhaps we can say, "Yeah, this is something we can consider"?
Yes, and I think that's... There's a difference between considering the practical reality of the land and the situation versus, you know, opining on legal rights of the parties.
Okay. Board members, do you have questions relative to that? I know I kind of just directed it, but did that kind of help clarify where we might position ourselves in it?
It does for me. I was at the property today. I took the liberty of measuring the narrowest point of access from the property line to that piece of ledge, and I had 11 and 1/2 feet. What you can get through there into the back, that's not for me to determine, but there was, if you stayed off of the other individual's, Ms. Smith's property, there was... I measured 11 and 1/2 feet of access. Is that enough? That's not for me to determine.
Yeah, I mean, typically, I think roadways are about 10. Like, a lane is about 10 wide, and parking spaces are... Well, CVS is like two feet, it seems, but most parking spaces are more than... Are less than 10 feet.
It's about nine feet traditionally.
Nine feet, okay. Okay, so, that kind of helps us just sort of understand where this... Where we stand with this. Does anybody have any questions relative to that or any discussion?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone... Did you want to follow up on any of what we just discussed at all?
Yes.
Come on up.
The McInnes do have a legal right of way to cross and recross over that property line on that roadway that has been there for, you know, since 1940, and has been used as the access since 1940. It is a legal right of way for them to do that. And we have given assurances outside of this board to Ms. Smith's attorney that if there's any damage whatsoever, we will take care of that on Ms. Smith's property. And if there's... And we will not use the parking area, which is depicted up there in the... To the left of the property line, which my clients have a license from Ms. Smith to use to park their personal vehicles there, and we will not use that, and we'll make certain that it's not used by construction vehicles as well. So, we think we took care of those issues with Kevin Stone, Ms. Smith's attorney, just before we came here.
And there is an access from Middle Bridge, right? It just has a little foot...
Right.
It has a little bit of frontage, but that's it.
No access from Middle Bridge.
It has a cusp, but there's no road or anything.
There's nothing. Okay.
Yeah.
Not that that's even relevant, I believe, but... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sure. Come on up, Mr. Walsh.
I just want to add this, too, is that I know it's tied up there... I just want to add this too, is that I know it's tight up there, you mentioned 11 foot six and granted, that's tight. If it's a situation where we can't, because I've done, I've been doing this for 30 years, if we can't get a cement truck up and a concrete truck up and around that house, we'll just pump it, okay? So a pumping truck is no big deal. I just did a project where we, we didn't even pump it. We actually had, they had like gators, like the you'd use on a farm, dump trucks, and we were actually filling the gator beds with concrete and driving around because we couldn't get even a pump truck over and around this house. So I guarantee you, we won't be infringing on the property next door, okay?
Well, and it sounds like that, as you heard, that it's not really the responsibility of the building inspector to say, hey, the tire went over the property line.
No, I know.
That's not their responsibility.
No, I'm just trying to share that we're aware of it, we're going to do whatever we have to do to mitigate.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Just make sure you turn that off. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else out there that wants to speak? I mean, oh, come on up.
Hi. Thank you.
Just for the record, please state and spell your name.
Holly Smith Reynolds and I'm the owner of 150 Ledge Road.
And could you spell your last name for us?
S M I T H space R E Y N O L D S.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
So please, Ms. Reynolds, please.
I'm the owner of the land to the left of the yellow boundary line and was currently, formerly the owner of the cottage. My mother bought it about 1980 from a non-relative, I just want to correct the record, that cottage was not part of family land. I own the little gray house above the horizontal yellow line and the one to the left, both properties. The one to the right is off 66 Torrey Road and that is owned by Battersea LLC, of which I am the principal. And the one to the left is my grandmother's former house. My grandmother bought and built the house to the left and then she bought the little cottage above the yellow boundary line off Torrey Road about in the 1930s and we all grew up in that little cottage. My mother then lived there till the end of her life and ended up in 19, late 1980s buying the subject property so that she could control the view. And as you can see, that's Meadow and View for her house. She ended up using it as a party cottage and I lived there after my divorce with my son, helped my mom redesign the old house formerly owned by Mrs. Pierce or Ms. Pierce, sorry. We called her Fierce Pierce as children and she was convinced by mom to sell this house. So the idea of a driveway being kind of shared by family was not an issue until when I was selling my interests to Ms. McManamy, my sister. And that has been, or was contentious until I tried to explain that we really have a three-house family compound and I spent a lot of time there. My uncle, who was in the house I'm in now, and my mom worked it all out. They did a lot of beautiful plantings of specimen trees just to the left of subject property line, moving from north to south. And so I didn't want to turn over, sell any of the land I own, but I allowed my sister by license to use that bump out of the driveway that you've seen. And additionally, I offered her, in order for, to achieve family harmony, to create a parking space, which is the little green area, which I maintain. I mow and maintain, I created. So my, I think I've, second floor actually in the original cottage is where my six-year-old son, when he was a baby, from one until six, maneuvered up and down those, very dangerous as they were called, stairs, but they're just wooden stairs. But no reason to go into that, it's not my problem, not my property.
So how do you feel about the addition being proposed?
I love it.
Okay.
I want to make your job easy. I love it. Because of being very tight to my property line and having to negotiate the McAdam paved drive around the house, I'm fine with cement trucks and they're not even the biggest of my concern. My concern are the big flat beds and the I-beams and, you know, you drive up past the house and now you're lifting equipment and you've got workers all around and they don't know where it can go. Well, we'll put it right there, you know? That's our staging area. And so I am requesting, and my attorney has written you about this as well, I heard you, Attorney Goins, when you said you don't want to really get into it, but I have an agreement that is very clear that I could execute tonight and expedite this whole issue. I would remove my objection if they would agree to put up a typical construction barrier fencing along from the north part of the property line, bump it out from the McAdam, close off the parking area so no delivery driver. I've had construction, I know what this is like. They come in at any time of the day or night and they just do what they need to do when they see the land. So come down from that northwest corner, bump out around the McAdam and come all the way down to Ledge Road and protect my property. You can't tell every delivery driver where they need to go and where they can put their pallets.
And, well, I mean, you realize that we wouldn't be part of that agreement.
I would remove my objection.
Right, but your objection is not to the addition, it's to the use of the driveway. We're only here for the addition, not the driveway.
Are you here to protect an abutter from having their landwork balked on and used?
That's, it's not, that's not our, that's not our purview. Our purview tonight is for the dimensional variance for putting the addition on.
If that dimensional variance threatens the abutter's property?
The variance does in itself because the building is, is...
24.4 and it should be 40, so I object.
You object to it being closer than the 20, than the 40?
If I can't get the protection...
I'm not saying you can't, it's just that you can't get it from us.
I understand.
Right, so your objection or not, it wouldn't necessarily change our, what our limits are, which is just for approving the addition being proposed.
Then I object to having it so close to my property line. If it were within the 40 feet, then there wouldn't be that issue. They would definitely be able to swing a cat or an I-beam.
Okay, well noted. We'll take that into consideration.
Right, thank you.
I appreciate it. Is there anyone else out there that has concerns about this particular project? Okay, do you guys like to follow up on anything? You're all set? Okay. Board members, any thoughts on this? Anyone have any thoughts to start out with? Mr. Rosen, you're sitting forward.
With the exception that there is some objection, it seems to me that this is a perfectly reasonable exception to the, to the setback requirements and the dimensional variance. And in that case, I am prepared to vote for the exception.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Anyone else have any thoughts? Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we look at the site plan, they're already 14.8 feet from the lot line and in fact, they would increase that distance by asking for 24.4 from the same lot line. So taking that into consideration and the fact that ledge and the existing environment around the requested addition is difficult, I would have no problem in approving the dimensional relief. Appreciate the objector's concerns, but as our counsel has advised, that is not in the purview of what we're here to decide tonight. So I would have no, no problem in approving.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Ilya? Nope?
No, I would concur with the other members.
Okay. Ms. Hicks, you're good? Mr. McDonald, everybody good? Okay, I don't, I agree, I think for those very two reasons that it seems reasonable. So is there anyone in particular who wants to take a shot at it? Motion?
Let's see, this is a dimensional variance, okay. At a meeting on August 27th regarding the petition as read into the record and by the chairman, I'm going to move approval of the petition. James Koopa, Koopa or Kuba?
Koopa.
Koopa represented the petitioner. John Walsh is the architect and was sworn in and he's the one that's going to be doing the actual construction or laid out the, what the addition is going to look like. There were two letters of concurrence on what should happen. There was two letters of objection, one from Ms. Holly Smith Reynolds, who spoke before the committee, or I should say the board. And there was her attorney also sent in a letter setting out the ideas that there was going to be, could be some objection, but there was a possibility of some relief that would be agreed upon by the petitioner and the objector as such. And so there were several materials that were put in to the record as the chairman alluded to at the beginning of this and so I will move the petition and for approval. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not the general characteristics of the surrounding area and is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant accepting those physical disabilities addressed in 45, 24, 30 per N 16. This is an unusual piece of property. It's, has access to Middle Bridge Road as well as Ledge Road. It's a fairly large piece of property. It has some problems with the actual rock and ledge that intrude onto the property and have to be taken into consideration by the architect and the construction workers, I assume. And so there, it is very, very unique in characteristics and it's well within the forest that surrounds it, so it's rather difficult to get to the property because there's a private road, which is the only access point to the property. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. As a matter of fact, she bought the property from the previous owner and the objector, Holly Smith, and they are going to have to come to some sort of agreement associated with how the construction is going to move forward. The board finds that the granting of the required variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. They're not really doing anything to change the character of the surrounding area. All they're doing is adding 570 so feet, square feet to the house itself and from our understanding, I haven't seen the inside of the house, but I did see the outside of the house, it's probably going to look pretty much the same from wherever any person is looking at it. And the board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property of the dimensional variance is not granted will amount, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience because it could cause some real problems. And as a result, I move approval of this petition.
Motion was made by Mr. Rosen, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Ilya?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye, motion passes. Good luck.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Okay, next, we're going to hear the petition of William Hanny of 358A Cards Pond Road, South Kingsham Road, Allen, 02879, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows.
Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a 26-foot, 3-inch by 18-foot, 2-inch addition to the legitimate theater with alcohol, use code 32.4. Lot size is 5.52 acres. Special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section 203. Special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion or intensification in section 907 are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Live Theater LLC, care of Theater by the Sea for premises located at 358A Cards Pond Road, South Kingsham, Assessors Map 921, Lot 2, and is zoned 200. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. It's a pleasure to see you all again. Attorney Matthew Landry, excuse me, from the Office of Bush and Kavanaugh, on behalf of the applicant, Live Theater LLC. It's doing business as Theater by the Sea, as you all know, and its proprietor, Bill Hanny. This is a fairly straightforward...
Will you repeat your name again?
Beg your pardon?
Please repeat your name.
Oh, Matthew Landry. So it's a fairly straightforward application. It is a special use application or modification, if you will, because this is a legally permitted use, a legitimate theater with alcohol that's been in existence here for better part of 90 years, we're all familiar with it. It is a use that requires a special use permit and any modifications or changes, alterations to that use require us to come back to this board and that's what we're doing. There's no major changes to the existing structure, it's a relatively small change. There was a previous building permit approved by the town for the roof extension only. I'm going to show you a picture here that's not in the materials because it's a little bit easier to explain exactly what Theater by the Sea is proposing. There are some construction plans, they're a little bit hard to follow based on the elevations that you're looking at and I can submit these as an exhibit if it's helpful, but this photograph that I'm showing you is the rear side of Theater by the Sea. This is the main road that you come and access, the front entrance is here. This is the large theater structure that rises above most of the other buildings on the property. That's where they house most of their staging materials, things connected with their productions. Again, this is looking in from the, actually from the west, but this is the south side of the building where the parking lot and staging area is. There is a little bit of a connecting space structure in between the production building and this additional building, which is to the west. This building in the middle is where the construction is going to take place, which is subject to this request. This is existing. The roof line extension will extend from this existing building to the rear at a slope. It actually gets lower as you get to the rear of the building. And the purpose of that, as you can see from the construction plans, is to create a second floor space for additional staging area for their produc- for additional staging area for their productions, dressing room space, and also a workshop where they make a lot of the props and other things used in connection with this production. Part of the construction has already taken place. As I said, there was permission or permit granted for the roof extension only. We haven't been able to close the building and complete that construction due to the need for this special use permit, so that's why we're here before the board. In terms of the standards, I think they're straightforward. This is, as I mentioned, a lawfully permitted use by special use permit. It's lawfully pre-existing. It's been there for ninety years, certainly permitted by the ordinance, and we're here before you to seek a modification to the building, which is permissible under your regulations. There will be no significant impacts to any of the neighbors. There's nobody to the south, and all of the construction is really confined within this small gap space that's currently open. It's in between the two existing buildings and slopes downward as you get to the south, get to the rear of the property, which is the south. So you're really not going to see anything from the street side. It's a fairly benign aesthetic upgrade, and it's certainly necessary to allow additional space for bigger productions and ongoing theater activities. So with that, I have nothing else to add. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. So you're not adding any, any public space in terms of, for more capacity? You're not asking for, it's not going to hold more garbage? It's not going to more-
No.
Mainly just for, just general functions of the building and so forth?
It's related solely to the theater operation itself. It's not a-
Back end.
Patron space. It's all backstage related.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for Mr. Landry? Mr. Rosen?
The photo? Yeah.
Yeah, can I see that photograph?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, the plans are a little bit hard to follow. The, on sheet, sheet A three-point-two that we submitted, that's looking easterly from the west, so that's a side shot looking at the building. That's the sheet you have up there, so that's sort of a, you know, slicing through the side of the building. If you're standing in the side parking lot to the west, looking back at the building, A three-two that's up on the screen, that's that, that elevation shot. And A three-one, yeah, A three-one is actually shot from the southerly elevation from behind the building, so that's actually the extent of the construction you'll see from the rear. That second floor is new. That bottom, that bottom detail is actually an interior door. There's actually going to be an open garage door-type structure on that side of the building. You can see that, actually, I'm sorry, in A two-point-one, you can see the proposed opening. It actually exists today, but it's not closed. So again, that's, A two-point-one is looking northerly from behind the building, and then A three-two is looking from the side parking lot on the west, back east into the building.
So this white line of that lower roof is being pushed up to there, right? So this is going up here?
That's right.
Yep, okay. So if you're looking at that, so that, that white roof down there that's lower, that L, that U shape is just being filled in and brought up?
Yeah, it was really already enclosed by three sides, so the roofline is going to extend from that existing cross structure that you see, and it'll go in a southerly direction towards the rear, the rear of the building.
Okay. That makes sense. So no bigger footprint, it's all existing to the footprint?
It's over existing space.
Yep, okay. Any other questions, board members? No? Would you like to add anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, you know, Theater by the Sea is an important institution to the community, and, you know, these upgrades are modest and will help the theater carry on bigger and better productions for years to come, so thank you.
It's nice to see him investing in the property. It's really wonderful. It's a great institution, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone out there that wants to speak on behalf of this petition for or against? No? Okay. It seems very reasonable. You know, it is just sort of closing in an existing space. They're not adding any capacity to the building in terms of patrons. They're not adding any space for, yeah, for any other use except for, for just the production use, so it seems very reasonable, so. Does anybody have any thoughts? They'd like to add, or someone want to make a motion? Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a petition of William Hanny, Cards Pond Road, South Kingstown, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance. The chairman read the application into the record and also read any other documentation as part of the record. Mr. Attorney Landry spoke and, on behalf of the applicant, and made argument for the reasoning behind the addition to the theater. There are no opposition to the request, and the board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by the ordinance because the ordinance originally allowed for a special use permit. They're now asking for an alteration or an addition, which then requires them to come here for the application that's present before us tonight. So the board finds that it is specifically authorized in the ordinance. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in a subsection of this ordinance of the special use because there are no additional requirements other than the addition. There's no requirements for additional utilities. There's no requirements for additional parking because this will be related to the theater, not related to patron usage or parking considerations. The board finds that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. And that, again, is because this is an existing theater. This is an addition to the existing theater that will allow productions to have greater use of the space they need for dressing rooms, for storage of equipment, and to further enhance the ability of the theater to carry on the great tradition of wonderful seasonal performances. There are no conditions with the application. There are no reason to go into utilities or screening or buffering or signs or anything else. The extension will actually be surrounded, is already surrounded by three sides. It will be barely noticeable from, from the front of the, of the existing structure. So with that, I would ask that the board approve the special use permit.
Motion is being by Mr. Daniels. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ilya. Any other discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Ilya?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Do I have to start over?
Because my mic wasn't on the whole time. I probably should, huh?
Please.
All right. Sorry about that. So the petition of Charles Truitt, eleven-oh-five Ferndale Road West, Wayzata, Minnesota, fifty-five-three-nine-one, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new dwelling consisting of two thousand and fifty square feet of floor area and two hundred and eighty-six of deck area. The maximum permitted amount of floor area is sixteen hundred and forty-six square feet. Therefore, a relief of four hundred and four square feet is requested. The maximum amount of deck area is two hundred and forty-six square feet. Therefore, a relief of forty square feet is requested. Lot size is point-one-two acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section six-zero-one. The special flood hazard area overlay district in section nine-zero-seven are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Charles Loeb Truitt Reconcilable Trust for premises located at three-one-one Winchester Drive, South Kingstown. Assessor's map sixty-nine dash two and lot thirty-three and is zoned R forty. So good evening. Please state and spell your name.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. My name is Laura Krekorian. I am, oh, Krekorian, K-R-E-K-O-R-I-A-N. I am an architect licensed in Rhode Island as well as Connecticut and Massachusetts.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Mr. Krekorian?
Yes, I do.
Excellent, so please keep going.
My office is at forty Main Street, and I have been in business in this area for over thirty years. I'm here tonight to present the application for Charles Truitt. Mr. Truitt is here with us tonight. He is the property owner of three-eleven Winchester Drive. This site is in plat sixty-nine dash two, lot thirty-three, and at abuts Point Judith Pond to the west. The lot is five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight-point-five square feet, and it has an existing three-bedroom house on it presently. The house is serviced by Town Water and by an existing septic system. The lot is also in an A elevation twelve flood zone. When the Truitts hired me to work on this project, they also hired Sergio Scherenzia of Scherenzia and Associates for all of the site work and to document existing site conditions and to review the existing septic system that is on the site. They also hired Ed Avazini, who is a biologist, and he helped us to document and verify the exact location of the coastal feature. One of the first things we did when we started work on the project was to do an in-depth study of the site and also of the existing house. I did work on this property in two thousand with the previous owner, so I am very familiar with the house and the, and the lot and the site. The house itself is old. It's a Cape-style house, and it does not meet today's flood zone standards. The structure and the windows don't meet today's wind loading requirements or energy code requirements, and it isn't in very good shape. We also weren't sure how deep the foundation system went below grade, so we did determine that to demolish the existing house and rebuild was a better option to be able to meet today's code standards and for the house to be safe and resilient for the family to be able to enjoy the property for many years to come. So with the new build, we did work really hard to try and meet as many zoning requirements as possible. We worked with DEM to maintain setbacks off the existing septic system, and we did work with CRMC to manage setbacks and buffers off of the coastal feature. This lot is in an R forty zoning district, but because of its lot size, it is a substandard lot of record. It doesn't meet, obviously, the forty thousand square feet of the R forty zone, and it doesn't meet any other zone size requirements, so we did work with the proportion method for setbacks and lot coverage, and these were confirmed by the building official, and they are labeled on the site plan. There were a few features that made the design more difficult or challenging for this project. One of them is the shape of the lot. It is a long, narrow lot, and it is pie-shaped with only twenty feet of frontage at the roadside. The second feature that made it a little more difficult was the location of the existing septic system. There isn't really another place to put the system other than in the front yard where it's located today. It is also a fairly new system. It is approved, it was, it's a documented and approved system. It meets today's standards for filtering and denitrification, so the plan was to keep the system to disconnect it and then reconnect it to the new house, but it does sit in the narrow front yard along each property line. You can see it's labeled on the site plan. WTS Leach Field is along one side, and the odd-shaped element with the circles in it is, is the tank. So with the, with the septic system in the front yard, it only left room for a driveway access down the middle, and the system does also have setbacks that need to be maintained for placement of the new house, so that was a little bit of a limiting factor in not being able to use much of the front yard for any of the, the new house. The third element that was a little difficult, is always a little difficult dealing with, is Point Judith Pond at the rear because the goal is always to stay as far away as possible from the coastal feature, and we didn't need to maintain buffers along the pond. So with all these existing features and setbacks overlaid onto the site plan, we did have a very specific buildable area to work within and a very specific footprint that would fit on this site. When combined with the fact that the site is in the flood zone, this added to the challenge because all of the living spaces and the utilities must be elevated above the flood zone requirement, and to accommodate my clients' needs and spaces that are functional in this small footprint, it meant that the program elements had to be stacked floor by floor. The Truitts had a few important needs when we were designing. One of them was that they needed to maintain the three-bedroom status of the house. It is an existing three-bedroom, and the new house is proposed to be a three-bedroom house. They do have children and family that visit, so maintaining the three bedrooms was really important for the, the new design. Another item they asked for was to connect the living space to the yard and to the pond. They did purchase this property for its location and for the beautiful site that it is, so to integrate the house with the site was really important as well. They also asked for an elevator. They are looking to age gracefully here, and with the living spaces needing to be raised above the flood zone elevation, the elevator became important for access. They also do have a family membership has told me that is a Para Olympian, so providing access for her as well was really important, and it meant that the elevator wasn't a place where we could swap it out and remove more square footage. It was an important element for the design. And the last request was from Mr. Truitt. He is not yet retired and does do some work from home, so he asked for a small office space. That was an important quiet area for him, and also when his kids visit, they can often extend their stay if there's a quiet place for them to work remotely. So for the design of the house, if you go to the floor plans, that would be great. I planned for the level at grade to be dead storage. It is in the flood zone. It will be a two-car garage. There's also a small entry area with access to the stair and the elevator. As this level is in the flood zone, it will be constructed of flood-resistant material and will be equipped with flood vents. There is an exterior stair at grade that then takes you up to the front porch, and at this next level up, there's the more formal front door, there's an open kitchen dining living area and access to the rear deck. The next level above that has two bedrooms, each with a bath. That's the floor plan you're looking at now. And to the right of that is the uppermost level, which has the third bedroom, the office area, and a small deck. So this proposed house does meet front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, and rear setbacks. It meets lot coverage. It meets the height restriction. The side yard setback actually was allowed to be two-point-seven-four feet with the calculations that we did, but we have maintained more space there with five feet at each side yard. The lot coverage was allowed to be thirty-seven-point-two-five percent. We are only at twenty-five-point-seven percent. I had mentioned that we plan to reconnect to the existing septic system. The engineer has reviewed the documentation on the system, and he has submitted it to DEM, but we did get a little held up with the DEM portal, permitting portal transition, so we are in the queue there, but we, we expect and are very optimist, very optimistic that we will have approval for them just to reconnect the new house to the, to the existing system. Because of all the documentation we have on it, it is a three-bedroom system, and we are proposing a three-bedroom house. We also submitted a preliminary determination to Coastal Resources, and some of the design decisions going forward were based on their feedback, so we are working closely with Coastal as well. One of the things that we did was to reduce the size of the house to stay within only a twenty-five percent increase in the footprint or the roofed area of the house. The proposed footprint is only a twenty-two percent increase. It's only twenty-two percent larger than the existing footprint was. We also rotated the house to be parallel to the south property line so that we could keep the bulk of the house away from the coastal feature, and we pushed the house as far east as possible, but of course maintaining setbacks to the existing septic system. The house presently is actually two to three feet further away from the coastal feature with its closest point than the existing house was. So while we're meeting a lot of requirements, we are here because the site is in the flood zone, and it is- a twenty-five percent increase in the footprint or the roofed area of the house. The proposed footprint is only a twenty-two percent increase. It's only twenty-two percent larger than the existing footprint was. We also rotated the house to be parallel to the south property line so that we could keep the bulk of the house away from the coastal feature, and we pushed the house as far east as possible, but of course maintaining setbacks to the existing septic system. The house presently is actually two to three feet further away from the coastal feature with its closest point than the existing house was. So while we're meeting a lot of requirements, we are here because the site is in the flood zone and it is subject to the bulk zoning requirements in the zoning ordinance. With only five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight point five square feet of lot area, we are allowed the one thousand six hundred and forty-six square feet of living space and two hundred and forty-seven square feet of deck area. The proposed house is two thousand fifty square feet with two hundred and eighty-six square feet of decks. I would say throughout the design phase, we did work really hard to streamline and to minimize the size of the house. At one point, the house was twenty-six feet deep. Today, you can see it's only twenty-three and a half feet deep, so we did reduce wherever we could. We also had at another point a larger front porch, but this was scaled back again to reduce square footage. It is only an entry area-sized porch. You know, you would come up the stairs and be able to stand on it to greet your guests. It's not large enough for furniture or for sitting on. The third floor, as opposed to being a full story with a shallow pitch roof that would have had a much larger massing and look, is actually built into the steep slope of the roof where the eve spaces are not habitable, which removes square footage from the area calculation. And with the placement of small dormers and the two gables at the rear and some of the lower roof overhangs that we added, we were able to reduce the massing and the look of the house. Also, the placement of the third floor deck removes some more square footage, so we did try to remove square footage wherever we could. But as hard as we work to minimize the size of the spaces and to design a Spartan and not overly generously sized house, there is still a need for the spaces to be functional, to meet code requirements for access, to fit fixtures, to fit things like appliances in your kitchen and furniture in the spaces, so we are requesting variances for the area, for the living space and for the decks. I would note that in the flood zones especially, where living space is lifted up away from grade and the houses get taller, I feel that decks and porches become even more important. They're design elements that not only connect the house back to the yard, but they also help visually to reduce and soften the height and the massing of the house. They add layering and human scale that help the house fit on the site and within the scale of the surrounding fabric. I think if you can imagine this house without the front porch or without the decks at the rear, it would be much more boxy. It would be much more imposing visually. I'd also like to note that these two requests that we're making tonight were within the limits that we could have asked for a modification from the building official. When I saw that, I got very excited because I didn't think I was going to have to present to the board, but Jamie did review the requests and actually, the living space at four hundred and four square feet was only twenty-four percent over. The decks with the forty square feet over the requirement were only a sixteen percent request, so they were well under that twenty-five percent threshold where you could ask for a modification, but Jamie did determine that you can't ask for a modification if the variance is from a flood zone requirement. He did say it was vague, your words, but South Kingston zoning ordinance does make the bulk zoning section a flood zone requirement, so that was why we had to come in front of the board tonight to ask for the variances formally. I would like to be clear about the code, however. Limiting the house or the deck size is not a part of the building code flood zone requirements. I could design a two-hundred-square-foot house or a six-thousand-square-foot house and each one would equally meet all of the life safety requirements set forth in the building code. This proposed house will meet all of the building code flood zone requirements. It will meet all of the wind loading structural requirements, all of the energy code requirements. We're managing all of the roof stormwater on-site and we have a septic system that meets today's standards. We're also working with Coastal Resources to maintain buffers along the pond and to maintain the house footprint increase at under twenty-five percent from the existing. The four hundred and four-square-foot living space variance and the forty-square-foot deck variance requests are the least we could ask for to allow the Truitts to enjoy their property, and we've worked really hard to minimize these requests. The variance requests are due to the unique characteristics of the property and to the site and not due to any prior action of the client, and I do feel that the proposed house fits within the scale and the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood.
Excuse me. So I'm going to just back up and ask for a little clarification either from Mr. Gorman or Ms. Goines. So I apologize if we've run across this ordinance before and don't recall it, but just to kind of help me understand what, why this particular...
Yeah, can't recall the last time. There was a petition with regard to the bulk regulations. So if a property is located or a structure in the flood plain and it's a new structure or substantially improved, it's going to be limited to floor area based on what the lot size is, so the smaller the lot, the less floor area you'd be permitted, and it's a fraction essentially, mathematical. It's point-three of what your lot area is, and then deck area to be allowed would be point-one-five of the floor area. So it's to limit the bulk of a building in, you know, many coastal regions, you know, specifically the flood plain.
The bulk in terms of how much land is versus how much building?
Correct.
Does it sort of help that?
The mass of the building, so to limit...
Impervious, the impervious surface kind of thing?
I don't want to say what the planning board, and I know other towns enacted similar, you know, ordinances, but so that there's not a massive, you know, on tiny lots, a massive, you know, floor area in buildings in general is, I believe, the intention.
Just sort of maximize a lot, like every lot, like is just sort of...
So that's proportionate to the lot so that it's not, you know, maxed out on every level, three or three-and-a-half stories.
And I'm sorry, just one more follow-up. So is it, there was a permissible amount they're allowed to go over typically, but not in this type of use, like not this type of property?
Are you referring to the modification? Is that what?
Yeah.
So the modification is, will allow a, you know, administrative review by myself, up to twenty-five percent of what is, you know, permitted by ordinance? So if the requirement is, say a setback is forty feet, you know, I'd be allowed to grant, you know, ten feet maximum of relief. However, this being, specifically this request, a flood plain ordinance, the modification prohibits, you know, the, that from being granted by the zoning official.
And that whole substandard lot, wasn't there something that recently passed? That doesn't apply?
It does to the, if you look at the survey, you'll see that the reduced, proportionately reduced setbacks are actually identified in the survey, which, you know, they're setting the building back at five feet on the side property line, but the actual side yard setback is two-point-seven-four.
But that's a setback, not the volume of the building?
That's the setback.
That's different?
It is.
Okay. And sorry, Ms. Goines, I was, I kept cutting you off.
No, I don't have too much to add other than, yeah, so the special flood hazard area regulations. I think the intent on the massing, controlling the bulk of the buildings is knowing that they're all going to have to be raised, you know, to control how big basically the buildings could be relative to the lot size, knowing that they're going to have to be elevated. So, and that, these regulations are in place, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, to ensure the town's continued participation in the flood insurance, in the national flood insurance program. So some of these regulations, and I don't know if the bulk standards regulations are part of that or if it's something that South Kingston does a little extra on top of what the minimum that the feds may require or the flood insurance program, but I think that's what Jamie meant when he said, he as a zoning official can't modify those standards by modification because they're over and above. Those, again, are requirements of the national flood insurance program. The town's participation could be, in other words, if we don't enforce the special flood hazard area provisions of the zoning ordinance, there could be consequence for the town and residents, so it's unlike other provisions of our zoning ordinance.
Does our approval of this make us vulnerable in any way?
No, no.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't make us vulnerable as long as we're evaluating it according to the standards for a variance.
Okay.
Or whatever relief is needed. Yes, so, but the setbacks are not, those are separate and apart from the special flood hazard area regulation. That's why this property as a substandard lot does have the benefit of those reduced setbacks pursuant to state law.
Okay, and Ms. Krekorian, this is, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. So this is about fifty-five-hundred square feet of a lot?
Yes.
Is that right? And it's supposed to be a forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. So this is where all of these things come together, right?
Yes.
In saying that we have a substandard lot and that we're allowed reduced setbacks, but you're not allowed to change that proportion of building to lot size?
Correct.
Unless you're coming here for a variance?
Correct.
Got it. I think I understand. So, okay. So based on that, board members, do you have questions for the designer or architect?
Actually, just a clarification from the building official. I believe you indicated that the administrative allowable setbacks are ten feet, and I'm looking at five feet here, so I'm wondering how we got there.
Well, I was using that as a scenario. In this case, they're not seeking any side yard relief, but they could request a modification, so up to twenty-five percent if they needed to, but I mean, that would set them, you know, so close to the property line it would be.
So you've previously approved the five-foot setback?
No, the, so the five-foot setback is actually the proportionate reduction that the lot is allowed without any kind of my approval or its by right essentially under the new legislation.
Okay, so that was an administrative decision then, correct?
No, let me, let me try to explain.
Based on law?
But the difference is, a modification is something the applicant has to apply for and there are standards for relief and there's a twenty-five percent threshold. You can combine the automatic reduced setbacks, proportionally reduced setbacks and increased lot coverage for substandard lots with a modification request. I don't think that was done here, right? So they're not seeking that relief.
But the setback is five feet, correct? That's an allowable setback?
It's actually two-point-seven-four on the side yard.
Okay, and that's allowable?
By ordinance, yes.
Any other questions, board members?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
As usual.
No?
This is a three-story house. Is there a height restriction?
So you bring up a good point. This is, in that section of the ordinance, building height is measured differently when it's in the flood zone, so in this case, it's measured from what is the base flood elevation, which is the one-hundred-year floods or storm. So perhaps you could pull up the elevation to kind of...
It's on the cross-section, Jamie. The height measuring, measurement. Yep, there it is.
So the ordinance regulates building height based on where the design flood elevation is, and right now they have the design flood elevation approximately five feet above grade. So by ordinance, any building that's elevated to, or the design flood elevation is up to five feet is limited to thirty-five feet from that elevation. So in essence, this building is from grade close to forty feet, although it's, it complies with the building height requirement. That wasn't confusing now, was it?
No, the only reason I asked it is because I looked around at all the other properties there and there is nothing that is three stories high, only two stories high. And so it occurred to me that it was over, it was going to be over the height of all the rest of the buildings, but if it's within the restrictions of the ordinance, then...
It's maximized, it's at the limit. It's, as drawn, it's not beyond the limit, but it might not be in, you know, similar to some of the neighboring houses, but it's, it complies.
Okay.
Could I speak to that for just a moment, Mr. Rosen? There are several other houses along Winchester Drive as you come in. There's a fairly new house right at the top of the hill before you go down around the bend that is tall and boxy and it is three stories, I believe, and there are several other houses that you come by as you go down Winchester Drive towards this property that are, that are at least two and a half stories, some of them are three. So there are other houses in the neighborhood that are that high.
That may be true. I wasn't looking that far away from the house. I was just looking around in the neighborhood.
I understand.
Board members, questions? Any other questions of Ms. Krekorian?
No.
Do you want anything else to add?
No, I would just ask Mr. Truitt if he has anything to add.
Come on up, Mr. Truitt. Just please state and spell your name, please.
Charles, and as she's pointed out, Chip Truitt, T-R-U-W-I-T, and I want to thank the...
Oh, do you spell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Excellent, please.
I was raised in Connecticut. My wife raised here in Rhode Island, and then I worked for a small HMO as a physician called the U.S. Army, and I've spent a good deal of time with the U.S. Army and stepped down from my time in the Army as an Army physician quite some time ago, and I worked as a physician and recently retired my full-time work, and I still work part-time as a radiologist. And radiology, as you know, you can now read the images on a computer, and so I still help out at various hospitals because there's a nationwide shortage of radiologists, and so I plan to do that here as well. Planning for us to make this full-time home. We currently live in Wayzata. I know it's written Wayzata, but for some reason it's pronounced Wayzata.
That's right.
I can't explain it, but after thirty-something years there, after my Army time and stuff, we have come up for parole and Minnesota's letting us move back to New England. So I've been looking high and low. We had a beach house in Little Compton years ago and our family and my daughter's here. Spent summers there and we're all looking forward to coming back, and I can't control what properties come available or when they come available, and when this one came available, I pounced on it. I'd been looking at this little peninsula for a long time and so I, that's how I ended up here. I appreciate all the time everybody's put in and the questions, and just for the record, I started the whole conversation with Jamie Gorman to make sure I understood what the rules are. The whole idea was to avoid a variance altogether, and if I understand the deal correctly, we've met everything for what would be an administrative decision except for the lot being in the flood plain and therefore it mandated that we come here, and we're not asking for anything related to the flood plain, but that's, if I understand correctly, why we're here, and I appreciate everybody's questions and everybody's things, and yes, Laura has pointed out, we have a few peculiarities related to my family that dictated some of the requirements for the house, and so that's how we ended up with this. Every, she'll tell you that I initially kept expanding and then got reality and I kept cutting and cutting and cutting, so that's how we got it down to this size, and you are right, sir, Mr. Rosen, that on that particular small part of Winchester, there is not another house that size, but there's also not another lot that size. As I tell people, this is taking a matchstick and cutting it in half lengthwise to make that lot, so we were forced to go up to get any square footage, frankly, but within spitting distance, there are at least four or five other homes that are equal in size and height, and they are much bigger square footage, on the order of three thousand square foot homes, and we're at two thousand and change, so that's what the goal has been, to try to keep it as small as possible to fit within... So that's what the goal has been, to try to keep it as small as possible to fit within the neighborhood as much as possible. I don't know every one of the neighbors, but I've talked to as many as I could. I only discovered recently that one of the neighbors isn't the owner of the property, and I haven't met the actual owner, who is, I think, one of the parents. But other than that, I've met and shown the idea to the immediate abutters, and they all expressed enthusiasm for what we're doing, and I hope that that's universal, and I hope we get to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we won't ask you to say or spell when asked what took it, so we'll spare you of that. And I didn't see any neighbors or anyone that written in anything, but we'll ask to see if anyone is here in behalf. So thank you. But before you walk away, Board members, is there any questions?
I just wanted to add one thing. We need radiologists in Rhode Island, as you probably already know.
Not only do I know it, a fellow classmate from Georgetown School of Medicine is on the Brown faculty here, and I talk to him regularly. And I don't have a Rhode Island license, but I suspect I will be getting one soon.
Oh, good, good.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything else, Ms. Krikorian?
No, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Make sure there's no other questions. Good?
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone out there want to speak on behalf of this petition for or against? Guys, come on up. Good evening. Just state and spell your name, please.
Peter Boyle, B-O-Y-L-E.
All right, and, uh, turn on the mic, try it again.
Uh, Peter Boyle, B-O-Y-L-E.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So please, what would you like to say?
Um, I'd just like to say that I've met Chip before. The, they, Truitt seemed like nice people, and Mrs. Krikorian built a, designed a really nice house. I just have one question for the council and one concern. My family owns 313 Winchester Drive, which is the abutting property to the south.
Yep.
Our entire access to Winchester Drive is our driveway, which is only eleven feet wide.
Yep.
So I'm concerned about access to the property.
Sure.
Especially, you know, during construction. We've got a two-year-old, and my wife's a real estate agent, so she's in and out of the house all the time.
Mm-hmm.
That is really my only, and as you can see from the street, there's, it's tight. There's not a lot of street parking anywhere either.
Right.
That is my only concern, really.
Yep.
And my only question is, in the, you know, proposed alterations, where it says they propose to demolish the existing three-bedroom house and deck and construct a new three-bedroom house and deck, I, this is the MLS listing from when Mr. Truitt purchased it, as well as I've been in the house probably a thousand times in my life. It's a two-bedroom house. That's, I'm just looking for an answer from the council.
We can find out what it means. I think a lot of times what happens is that they can ask for a septic system that's bigger than the house with an idea of getting bigger, but we'll ask them that.
Okay.
And we'll also ask them about access and maintaining access. I mean, although, Mr. Gorman, is, if, it's more of a police issue when there's, when egress isn't sort of allowed, like when people are impeded access to their property, right? I mean, who would they call?
Unless if it's posted no parking, I mean, certainly, you know, it behooves the contractor and the owner to have a construction meeting beforehand to make sure that they're aware of, you know, where they can and can't park. But if, you know, Winchester does have parking, you know, moving up the street or perhaps shuttling in, but it would be a police matter.
Just so you know, I mean, you can certainly call Jamie, but he wouldn't be able to really help you.
Right.
So, so I think it's just, certainly them, I think we'll ask them to make sure that they have a construction plan, or they'll consider a construction plan, just to make sure access is maintained and so forth. I know with challenging sites, sometimes you're like, okay, we're going to meet over here.
Yeah.
And then every, you know, there's a couple of jobs in Newport I was a part of that literally there would be a shuttle bus driver. And, and so I don't think it'll be that extreme, but I mean, certainly, we can ask them.
Okay.
So, but other than that, you're okay with their requests? I mean, because what they're asking for is to build a larger footprint than they're allowed to.
Yeah, I, I mean...
It's big.
I, I, all of the other houses, the newest ones on Winchester Drive, they are all the same design, where the garage is underneath and the structure's very tall.
It's a lot different than the buildings that were there.
Yes, the little nineteen forty-six cottage that we live in, it's, it's going to tower over it.
Yeah.
But that's, they're all going to look like that. My only concern is, you know, being able to get in and out of the driveway. Since it's got a large family and there are going to be a lot of people over, they can maybe put three cars in that driveway, tops.
Right.
And yeah, just construction, it's going to be a nightmare, but there's nothing you can do about that.
Yeah, and also know that South Kingston does have a noise ordinance as well, that they're only allowed to work certain hours. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, weekdays, seven to nine, and then weekends, I believe it's seven to six, just on the weekends.
Right. Just so you know.
All right, thank you.
Because I've heard some blowers going off at six-thirty.
Yes.
But, you know, not a fan of that. So, okay, we'll, we'll ask you guys, do you mind coming up and answering a few of these questions if, if you can? So the, the major concerns are maintaining access for neighbors and sort of parking and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
You guys know it's a small lot?
Yep.
Have you, I mean, have you picked a contractor and everything so far?
We do not have a contractor as of yet, but we would work with them very closely to make sure that we try as best we can to keep all the neighbors happy and to keep access, obviously, to their driveways without blocking anything. There is a boat in the driveway now, which will be removed. We're going to want to protect the septic system as well, and it could be that we can stack some of the construction materials on top of the septic system in the front yard. And I, I mean, I would say that shuttling in, if we have to park down the street in other locations and just bring in one construction vehicle, that would be something we would entertain, but we would work really carefully with the contractor to manage all of that.
Okay. And how about ultimately, how many vehicles would be able to be parked inside the house or inside the lot? Is it a two-car garage with one parking outside?
Nope, there's a two-car garage under the house.
Yep.
When, when the house is finished, you mean, right? Yeah, there's a two-car garage under the house. And then the driveway does extend from the twenty feet of road frontage all the way into the garage, which is, where you see the number eighteen, the eighteen-foot length of the building there.
Right.
That's the face of the garage. So we do have the entire, pretty much...
Forty-five feet or something like that to the end?
The length of the lot, from, from the road all the way into that point. So, yeah.
Okay. So you have, you have some space to fit a couple of vehicles?
Yep, definitely.
Okay. How about the last thing about, is it, the house that's existing there, is that, is there a three-bed, is there actually three?
There's a three-bedroom septic design for the house.
Okay. But the house is two bedrooms, but with a three-bedroom septic technically?
As far as I know, it, it was used as a three-bedroom at some point, at least when I worked on the house previously, it was used as a three-bedroom, but it could be that it's two bedrooms today.
Okay.
Yeah, but the three-bedroom septic is in place, it's installed, and it's, it's adequate for a three-bedroom house design.
Okay. Okay. Board members, questions relative to this? No? Okay, thank you. Did that, did that answer a lot of your questions? I think certainly, hopefully, in this case especially, you get to know everyone that's working there, and you can call them immediately if there are any issues relative to its construction period, because the relationship with the folks working there is, is really critical. So...
We have to add the automobile curbs table in the garage.
Is that what that is? Oh, it is, okay. Oh, cool. Yeah, I, I've been in carriage houses that have them, which is really cool, too. Anyhow, so is there anyone else out there who wants to speak on behalf of this for or against? Nope? Okay. You what? Come on up. And please just spell and state your name, make sure you press the little body there and make the, show the lights on.
My name is Robert Gamache.
And spell that for us, please.
G-A-M-A-C-H-E.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I so swear.
All right, excellent, Mr. Gamache. Please.
My concern is something that's already been discussed, but I just want to emphasize it. It's going to be hell in that part of the neighborhood. It's, it's pretty tough there, just as it is.
Yep.
So I would, I would just reemphasize that we're going to need some, some help from the police or whoever in order to exist there through this construction, I think.
Yeah, I, I would, again, I mean, I'm a contractor. I mean, so I certainly understand and respect people's need, because it does change their lives for, you know, the time that things are built. So I, I would hope that they come to you, but I would also encourage to go to them once things start, and hopefully we don't, you don't need the police. Hopefully it's just all resolved as it occurs. But yeah, it is a small site, clearly.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, but otherwise, you're okay with its scale and so forth? I mean, well, are you okay with what they're asking for, I should say, more so than saying the scale?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
So clearly, there are concerns about, about the neighborhood and making sure that you guys can be as respectful and considerate of neighbors, and hopefully the timeline and supplies and everything keep, keep the project on, on schedule, so. Okay, anyone else? Behalf? Okay, any other thoughts, Board members, on this? It is very interesting, I mean, I'll, I'll start off, I guess. I do find it very interesting that, that, of what, what they're asking for, I think is, is, I can certainly understand that there, there are restrictions based on the volume for, for such properties in, in such sensitive areas. So I think if it were more common, I, I might have more pause as to, as to what scale and what proportions they're sort of asking for, if there are a lot more kind of coming into us. But since this is one of few that have come in front of us, I feel that this is a, it is unique at this point. I'd hope to, you know, think that this, this doesn't become more common. So I think it's really hard. It's not a big building. I mean, when, when, in, in terms of its footprint, it's not a big building. I think in its mass, it, it seems a bit, it, it's much larger because of the, the first floor being that washaway, but scale-wise, I, I think it would be, you know, you'd have to really clip some pretty significant portions of the building. I think that, that the design is very thoughtful. I think space is, is definitely, I mean, it, it seems like on each floor, they utilize every part. They have a nice big circular staircase, so they're, they're saving space that way. Obviously, the elevator in that space is taking up mass, but I understand having that, being down in Hutchinson Island in Florida before, there's an elevator in every one of those places. So, you know, I, I can understand sort of that need, so I, I, I don't know. I, I think it, it ends up being reasonable to all of the conditions that, that this site has, so, so I'm more apt to say yes, but that's just my thoughts. I don't know, if anybody else?
I would echo the chairman's remarks.
All right, anyone else? Have any thoughts? Anyone else want to make a motion? Or did I almost make one?
I don't care.
I can try. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of Charles Truitt of 1105 Ferndale Road West in Minnesota. I won't try to say it again, but, so this property is at 311 Winchester Drive in South Kingston, Rhode Island. We had a very thorough presentation by the designer and architect, Ms. Krikorian, talking about the uniqueness of this particular site. It is very unique in the sense that it is in a special flood hazard area in a, in a part of South Kingston, where we want to be thoughtful as to the scales, the scale of the buildings that go in there, and any size variations are, are closely regulated and monitored. We've, we've seen in this particular property, the, the discussion about some of the setback requirements being changed with the recent changes in the, in the law, where they can have a smaller setback, they actually can have a two-point-seven-four side yard setback. They're doing it at five feet, they're giving a little more space, so there was some consideration in terms of that. And then they also oriented the building to one of the lot lines, because this is, none of the sides are parallel on this particular lot. So they were trying to have an orientation that at least made sense to one of the lot, lot lines. Also, what's particularly unique about this property, they have a twenty-foot frontage, which is pretty small, pretty much the size of a driveway entrance, and they do have a three-bedroom pre-approved septic system in it. So based on all those things, they came up with a design that would meet the needs of the family for that three-bedroom home, including an elevator and an office on the upper floor, but they're within the height restrictions, they're within the setback of the, of the ordinance, and they're really looking for a deck variance of two-hundred-and-forty-six square feet and, I'm sorry, a forty square feet, they're looking for a variance for that, and they're looking for about four-hundred-and-four square feet. The building is going to be in, is, is pretty much, it's very consistent with the, with the buildings in the area in terms of what can be built these days. So we find that, oh, well, we also had some other folks speak on behalf of this with both neighbors, Mr. Gamache and Mr. Boyle, were adjacent to the property, who weren't necessarily concerned about the scale of the building, but they were concerned about access to the site. They were also, you know, just, just concerned that, that there might be some congestion as, as things are being constructed. But in terms of their overall design and, and the request for the variance, they did not object. So with assurance by the owner that, that there would be communication during construction, we don't feel that, that the final design is necessarily going to be of negative impact, But we did speak at great length about is that design appropriate and, and the use of the building appropriate for, for that lot. We, so in terms of what was entered into it, we have some site plans. Ms. Krikorian also talked about how they did extensive environmental reviews of the site to make sure that they weren't going to have a negative impact on the site, so they had some pretty thorough documentation of the building and the site. So we find that the hardship from which the applicant will seek relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and structure, and it's not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and that it's not a, due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. And this is because the lot, like I said, it's a very, very unique shape. It is, is way undersized. It's about fifty-eight-hundred-feet, square-feet lot, where there's, it's a forty-thousand-square-foot lot typically in the area. So it is, it is a very unique site. We find that the hardship is, is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, because this is their first application, and as I said, that they've, they've tried to find other sites, but this is the only one that was really available and for, suitable for what they, they were looking to do. So we find that the granting of the variance will not alter the general... So we find that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. And, and this also goes back to us considering the impact the building is going to have on the area. We do not hear of a lot of requests for people wanting to exceed that, those proportions that are set for this sensitive area. So we don't feel that it's going to impair. And, and if the board, the board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if it is not, the variance is not granted, will amount to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that the relief sought is minimal and for the reasonable enjoyment and of the permitted use of the property. It's a small lot, and the building, you know, is, is as minimal as we believe is appropriate for this particular spot. There's no approval, there's no conditions to the approval. So with that, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rosen. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Cagnetti, yes. Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Ilya? Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck. You're welcome. It's a nice design. Thank you. It's very cool. Oh, should I add that? Okay. So I will amend the past, my, my, my motion to have a two-year- expiration for the permit. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No. Okay. Is that it? Thank you. All right. So we have minutes from Wednesday, July 16th. Is there any changes or alterations to a document? Yes? Sure. Just turn on your mic.
Okay, on page three of the minutes, one, two, three, four, five, well, actually, it's my name. It says, Ms. Hicks asked about, and then there's a blank line. And the next one, Mr. Gorman indicated that the notice represents a height variance what was referenced earlier has to do with, and the sentence isn't finished. That whole section is missing. I'm going to have to review the audio, and I'll make any appropriate changes.
Thank you for noticing that.
Okay.
Okay, with those changes, make a, make a motion to approve the minutes from July 16th. All in favor? Aye?
I'm not in favor. I don't think we can approve them until we have a corrected-
Is that, is that true?
What, what you can do is just put it on next, next month's agenda.
Okay. So I won't, okay. So I withdraw that, that motion. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Okay. So our next meeting, September 17th. Is everyone going to be here?
Yes.
You will not in October. Keep that in mind. Okay. Any other business to attend to? Would there, is the new administrative associate going to be here for the next meeting?
So his start date is on day after Labor Day, so the 2nd, so we're going to throw him right in the fire.
Nice.
Yep. I mean, Jess agreed to help us out, so hopefully she'll be at the next meeting and we can kind of, you can shadow and get the lay of the land. But yeah, look forward to it.
Excellent. Excellent.
And there's only three items on applications for next month, plus the appeal-
Plus the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.